Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of April 21st, 2021, School Board Work Session, to order. First item on the agenda is accept or modify the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the agenda as presented this evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Next item up is the consent agenda. I have a motion.
How do we accept the consent agenda as presented? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Moving on down to the action agenda. Approve increase in hourly pay rates for extended school year positions. Mr. Hirsch, please.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Ballinger. Warren County Public Schools offers extended school year services to qualified students with disabilities throughout the county. The support generally happens in the summer, but it's not limited to the summer. It's designed and planned to meet the individual needs of the student. So if a student needs extended school year services in the evening, or needs it during break, it very well, and does, happen across those times when they're not generally in school. Due to the short summer break, it's really accented the need to recruit staff. It's been increasingly difficult to secure staff. It's recommended to increase the hourly rate of E S Y administrator from $35 to $45 an hour, to increase the speech pathologist, the physical therapist, and the O T, occupational therapists, from $35 to $45 an hour, the E S Y teachers from $25 to $35, summer school and the E S Y nurse from $25 to $35, because we have nurses across settings, supporting extended school year services, as well as general education summer school, and then from the instructional assistants from $10 to $15 an hour. This is keeping it competitive with our neighbors, competitive with all the other people providing services over the summer. That's the recommendation. Is there any questions concerning that?
For teachers, we paid $25 an hour.
For O Ts, P Ts, and speech paths, it was $35 an hour. The administrator was $35 an hour, and instructional assistance was $10 an hour. So there was a slight increase, well, a slight increase, I think a pretty substantial increase in each category.
When you say that's included in our surrounding areas.
Yeah, it's very competitive with the surrounding areas, and it's also competitive with our general education summer school program as well.
Didn't we just, didn't we increase our summer school? They did, yes.
We did, Jim.
So it's an increase.
Yeah, we did increase the summer school, and, you know, we thought it only fitting that, you know.
Why, I was just wondering, that's why I was asking what it was last year. Okay. Any other concerns, questions? You have a motion?
I move that Warren County School Board approves the hourly rates for the extended school year administrator at $45 per hour, extended school year therapist at $45 per hour, extended school year and summer school nurses at $35 an hour, extended school year teachers at $35 an hour, and extended school year instructional assistants at $15 per hour.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Approval of 2021-2022 Local Perkins Career and Technical Education Plan. Ms. Baker, please.
Thank you. As this time of year, I come to you with what is our plan, local plan of spending for the Perkins Funds for 2021-2022. It is, at this point, still technically in draft, because we have not had released to us the exact amount of money that will be allotted to Warren County Public Schools. So what you see is written with the $96-plus-thousand-dollar amount that came to Warren County for the 2021 school year. One thing that I would like to bring to your attention is, in the middle of all of that, on your screen, you have what is called the performance assessment. These are the standards by which Warren County, as every other school district that has CTE programs, are judged. This is the standard by which we should be planning our programming for the coming years. If you look at that, what you will see was that we did meet every standard set before us in the 1920. This year remains to be seen, and honestly, I don't know how it's going to go with everything that we have faced this year, between credential tests and just attendance and so forth and so on. I will point out that while we met the 32.8% of non-traditional program, and that benchmark is 28%, that remains one of our objectives. Also down five S three, you'll see program quality participated in work-based learning. We had 26% of our students last year that were completers. A completer is a graduate who has had a sequence of CTE classes and received a credential. We had 26% of those that participated in a work-based learning opportunity. I will show you also that the special population students had an even greater percentage at 27.5%, and that I give all credit to the employment for education classes that take place at the two high schools. So, are there any questions?
Just, do we have to come back and reapprove once the figure is? Okay. I move that the 2021-2022 Local Perkins Career and Technical Education Plan be approved as presented with the knowledge that amendments will occur as information becomes available.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Baker.
I will say that this is brought forward at this time because the due date on it is April 30th, which is why we always.
Right. Juggle. Thank you. Approval of vehicle purchase. Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening. In an effort to maintain our quality, safe, and needs-appropriate vehicle fleet for the Transportation Department, request the purchase approval of two used Dodge caravans from G and M Auto Sales. These vehicles will be used primarily for in and out of county student transport. Questions?
Trading three and getting three, if I read it right.
We're getting two, but what we're getting rid of is.
Yeah, it should have been all. Any questions for Mr. Mitchell?
So how many vehicles will you be left with for that?
Alto, you can just, I mean, give you a lot of stuff.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You have a stat everywhere.
Do you have a question? Do you have a question? I move that for the approval of the two attached buyer's orders for two used Dodge caravans from G and M Auto Sales be approved for the sum of $26,372.05.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next up, update on required immunizations. Mr. Hirsch.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Ballinger. Since April 9th, 2021, the Virginia Department of Education put out Superintendent's Memo 95-21, and what this is, is the General Assembly passed the House Bill 1090, which amended the minimum vaccination requirements for attendance at public school, private elementary, middle, or secondary school. And also, these requirements are for childcare centers, nursery schools, family home daycare, or developmental centers. So we wanted to get the information out as soon as possible to our families and the citizens of Warren County. That's why such the quick informational session here. We also posted this information on our websites. Immunizations are required for enrollment in school, regardless of whether a student is receiving virtual education or in-person reglet, education. The following information highlights the changes for the vaccinations. And I think there's a, yeah, something's posted up here on the smart board. In kindergarten, there are a host of vaccinations that are required already. There is a new vaccination for kindergartners, and that has to be, it goes into effect July 1st. So for rising kindergartners coming into school this year, there needs to be two doses of the hepatitis A vaccine. In addition, seventh graders also receive vaccines in the past. There is a new meninococcal vaccine required, as for rising seventh graders. This goes into, in addition to the T-DAP boosters that seventh graders were already getting. We have our nurses, and we work with the Health Department very closely, in providing clinics at the school, usually the spring prior to the school year starting, or over the summer. And we're in the process right now, the Health Department, as you can well imagine during this uncertain year, is very, very swamped. But we're working very diligently in creating those clinics for our students as well, to make it easy for families, so they don't have to go out and do that. So we'll try to do those in the schools. In addition to the seventh grade, rising seventh graders, where they get the first dose of the meninococcal vaccine, there is another dose required for rising 12th graders. So that is a two-dose vaccine. So you'll get it when you go into seventh, and you'll get it when you go into 12. There is another vaccine, but it is not mandatory. Parents can offer, opt out of this vaccine, and that is the HPV vaccine, and that's for seventh graders as well, for the rising seventh graders. The first of two doses is required by 7/21, but again, parents may elect to decline. And those, in essence, are the new vaccines. One in the kindergarten, one new one in rising seventh graders, and one new one in rising 12th graders, and then there is an optional one for seventh graders, for rising seventh graders. We wanted to get that out as soon as possible to the citizens, and to our parents, and our families, so they can discuss it and understand what we're offering. Any questions?
I'll just tell you earlier, so, I do have concerns about some of these vaccines, the hepatitis A, the HPV. We're in an area where the risks are so low for either one of those diseases, and I think our children get enough vaccines, and that's just my personal opinion, but I do have concerns about that. So if a parent opts out of having their child have these vaccines, what happens?
Well, they can opt out for the HPV vaccine. That is, they can opt out of that. On the other vaccines, it is mandatory for them to attend school, but there is a religious exemption. So if it is in contradiction to a family's religious beliefs, there can be a religious exemption for these vaccines.
I don't know that you can answer this, Mr. Hirsch, but, you know, the new one is the hep A for kindergartners, but it doesn't go past that. So the new kindergartners coming in this year would have to get it. But if you're already in first grade or 12th grade, you don't have to get it. I mean, to me.
That's correct.
It's not logical, though.
That is correct. They're starting now, and the rest are grandfathered in. And the same is true for an eighth grader would have to get the meninococcal vaccination later, they're grandfathered in for this year.
And like, this hep A, it says three doses, and I know they have to be spread out. You can't, you know, you get one, you gotta wait a month or so to get another. So if the child doesn't have them all done before the school year, they can't come in?
Now, if they have the doses started, and they have a schedule for the doses, we will allow them to come into school.
I would agree with that. I mean, it just seems like a lot, you know.
Who's recommending these?
This is from the Department of Education, and it's actually, and that's why I brought this other information up, and I knew there'd be some questions. It was passed by the General Assembly this year, and it was put down to us through a state superintendent's memo through the Department of Education on April the 9th. And again, we wanted to get this information out to people as soon as possible. We don't want to spring it on them, you know, in the summer, right before July, so we wanted to get this out soon. But it is the Department of Education.
And the General Assembly.
I'm sorry.
You said the General Assembly passed it, so it is a code, I guess?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions for Mr. Hirsch? I don't know where we have a way around it.
Well, I just hope parents, you know, it's up to them to do what they think is best for their child.
Absolutely. Pleasure of the Board.
I don't think we have, we don't get anything on that.
No, we don't? I thought this was going to be good.
No. No, I think the state is telling us right.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's true. The state is telling us. You're exactly right. Thank you, Dr.
Any further questions, Mr. Chairman?
Anybody have anything else for Mr. Hirsch? No, thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Second reading and discussion of February 2021 V S B A School Board Policy Updates. Ms. Shepherd, please.
In February 2021, Virginia School Board Association submitted 38 policies for consideration by the Warren County School Board. A chart showing the updated policies has been prepared by staff members noting to propose changes. An additional 12 policies are presented for review, but have no recommendation for revisions. We would like to recommend, we would also like to recommend policy IKFD, Alternative Pass to Attaining Standard Units of Credit for Consideration. IKFD was developed by V S B A as an optional policy in May of 2017. The first reading of the proposed changes was the April 7th meeting. At tonight's meeting, there will be an opportunity to discuss the changes to the policies and final approval to the changes scheduled for the May 5th meeting. Just to take your attention to policy B D D H, which is also policy K D, we are going to strike through the language that says persons wishing to address the school board are requested to contact the superintendent, the school board chair, or their designee for placement on the agenda. We have always had a time at our first meeting on our school board agenda where community is invited to participate, so wanted to share that with you. And then also IKFD, the new policy, the policy that we are asking to be approved that was optional back in May of 2017, it's alternative ways to earn credit for a course, and this is a perfect year to, as an example, for an alternative way to, you know, it's just not 140 clock hour seat setting in a desk with a teacher at the front of the room. We can use alternative means in order to verify credit. And, but the policy does say the course standards will still be rigorous. The policy includes language that the standard credit must equal to progress in learning achieved in 140 clock hours of instruction. So the course will still be rigorous, it just may not need 140 hours for a student sitting in a desk for, in front of a teacher. So be happy to answer any other questions that you may have, but thought I would clarify those couple of policies.
Anybody have anything for Ms. Shepherd? No? All right. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Update on secondary class schedules for 2021-2022 school year. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So we put a survey out to our high school teachers and to all secondary, or high school students, so nine through 12, and we wanted to really look at what schedule would be best for moving into next year. And, you know, we've been on a four-by-four in the past. We know that we were looking at, you know, an A B schedule. We know that this year, they were actually put on a six-period day schedule, and so moving into next year and planning with what high school schedules will look like, we wanted to get feedback to find out which schedule would work best for us. And so the schedules that we presented was one to four-by-four. That's where students are, you know, they're responsible for four classes in a semester. The class ends in the semester, and it's typically anywhere between 82 to 90 minutes long. We also gave the option of a modified four-by-four schedule, to where some classes may be 90 minutes long, and they're only a semester long, while other classes may be a year long, and so you would split a class, and we call them skinnies for modified, because you have now two 45-minute, but it may be that that class needs to be year-long, and so those students are going to that year-long 45 minutes. So they may have, they may have two or three block classes and two other classes that are year-long. A lot of times, when you see schools use that format, it's for your AP. So one of the biggest complaints about a four-by-four schedule is if you're AP and you take the course in the fall, the exam's not till the spring. So you haven't had that course, so that's where a modified and extending like those AP classes year-long, that's where that would help out, and that's why that was presented as well. Then, of course, we offered the other schedule was the A B. Now, let me back up one second. On the modified, a student could be responsible in a semester for up to, some may be four classes as a four-by-four, but others may be six courses, if they have two skinnies that are year-long, or two 45-minute classes that are year-long. So they would have their three blocks plus other classes.
Would that also be used for like more languages and math?
It could be. It could, yes, ma'am. It could be used for any of those other classes, so, you know, and especially with remediation. So sometimes you see that you have some year-long Algebra I classes, they're just done in a block setting, and they do a part one and a part two. But yes, it could be with band, it could be with some of the, you know, journalism was one that we thought of, that, you know, it'd be great to have your class that's putting together your yearbook year-long, instead of have half of them one semester, half of them another semester. And so, you know, that's where that comes in. So then we also offer the A B schedule. Now, on this schedule, it is similar to, the students would have eight classes that they would be responsible for, and it's year-long. But on any given day, they're only responsible for four classes. So on Monday, those would be one, three, five, and seven. On Tuesday, two, four, six, and eight. But for the entire year, they're responsible for all eight classes. It's just how those, and then you rotate those weekly. So one week, you may have your odd classes three times, but the next week, you're only going to go to those classes twice that week. And that's the A B schedule. And then, of course, since we were in the, you know, on a six-period day, we said, okay, let's continue to look at a seven-period day to see if this, you know, that way everybody continues throughout the school year, it's year-long, and we have some experience in this, so we wanted to offer that. So those were the four schedules that we looked at. And I'm going to ask Ms. Shepherd to come up and talk to you about the survey results, and just kind of let you know where we're at, and kind of how the survey was conducted, and the information that we gleaned from that. And you should have.
You should have a handout in front of you. So I'll start with the teacher survey. 90 teachers responded to the survey, and if you will look at the data in front of you, 36.7% of our teachers wanted a four-by-four block schedule, and then another 16.7 were interested in the modified four-by-four block schedule. So if you add those two numbers together, because they are both a four-by-four block, you have about 50, over 50% of our teachers are interested, of the 90 teachers who responded are interested in a, some form of four-by-four block. You can see the seven-period day only had 13.3%, and I think that has to do with our experience this year with the six-period day. I think they experienced it, they didn't like it as well as, you know, as they may have thought they would, but they, but we have 13.3% that were interested in a seven-period day. And then we had 33.3% who were interested in A B schedule. So on the opposite side of that page is the student responses. And the very top graph on that page is the number of students who responded by grade level. So the least number of students who responded were seniors, because it's really not going to impact them next year. So 9.7% of our seniors responded, but then we got a pretty good response of all of our other, you know, of all of our other students. We had 290 responses, which is about 20% of our high school students. So that's a good number of responses for a survey. If you look at the bottom, you'll see that 44.8%, almost 45% of students wanted a four-by-four block, a straight four-by-four block. They wanted to take four classes a semester. And then when we talked to some of our high school leadership team today, they said next year would be a great year to have a four-by-four block, because we may be doing some remediation, and we may have some students who need to take, for example, English 10 first semester and English 11 second semester, or something like that. So there may need to be some remediation built into our next year's school schedule. We had 23% of our students who were interested in a modified block, a modified four-by-four block. So you add those two numbers together, and almost 70% of our high school students were interested in some form of a four-by-four block. Again, you look at the number of kids who are interested in, or students who are interested in a seven-period day, and that number was about 18%, a little less than 18%. And then 13, almost 14% were interested in an A B alternating block, which that is, kids would be responsible for eight classes the entire year. So I think the information from our students and our staff really point toward us doing a four-by-four block next year, and we'll be meeting with our administrative staffs at both high schools to see if we're going to do a modified or a straight four-by-four, but it's, they're very interested in knowing what we're going to do for next year, so they can start scheduling kids at this time. So be happy to answer any question, or Dr. Ballinger may have something he would like to add.
And thank you for sharing that information. But really, as Mrs. Shepherd stated, it's pretty well clear what the students want. They, you know, maybe this was a bad experience for them, they want to jump back to the four-by-four, but Mrs. Shepherd is correct in stating that we may have some of those ninth graders that struggled this year, and may have to retake that course next year as a sophomore, but the four-by-four, what it does allow you to do is that I may have to retake English nine as a sophomore in the fall, but then I can get right back on track with English 10 the next semester, and not really jeopardize anything as far as with me graduating on time. So the block does allow that, and I think what we really want to listen to is, you know, our students, they're the ones that, we're here for them, and we need to listen to what they're saying and what they're wanting as well, and our teachers too, as well. But the teachers and students, they're still, you know, what's good for a teacher for instruction is different for a student, when you're considering a work one. And so, you know, we understand that we want to work with both groups to the best of our ability, but I think we really, as Mrs. Shepherd stated, the four-by-four is where we need to be for next year, and I think our students really said that. And looking at our teachers, yes, that still was above, just barely above on the A B, but as she stated, even with the modified, you know, that is still a four-by-four, just with a few differences on 45 minutes, but really, one of the things we need to look at is what's best for next year to help us recover from a pandemic. And I think this is, the four-by-four is one, and I think our data helps us, and it shows us which direction we need to go.
And one of the other areas that the four-by-four block helps us with is our students who are entering governor's school have to double up on some math classes and maybe some science classes, and this allows them to do that, not taking too many core classes in, you know, a first semester or a second semester. classes in, you know, a first semester or second semester, allows them to, to do like Algebra One and Algebra Two in first semec, first semester and second semester, and not have to take them simultaneously in one semester, so, so that is a positive as well.
Was there any difference in the data between two schools?
Um, they... I don't know that answer.
I don't think we, we, I don't think we, we didn't set it up that way. I think we just sent it out to all secondary teachers. We didn't send it out to one school versus the other school or student or, yeah, because we needed to, we just wanted to get an overall for, for, for the county. So I don't think we sent it out school-specific.
Well, because I asked, I know that in the past there have been some differences in how, between Skyline and Warren County as far as how to set up the scheduling, so I didn't know if you all.
So I collect these addresses, I can actually, um, find that data and send you the information, so, yeah, yeah.
I have one question. Uh, this is for the high schools, about what we're going to be doing or considering for middle schools.
Yep, so the middle schools are on a block schedule, a kind of a modified block schedule. Their, their four core classes are blocked, but I think science and history, um, are more of a year-long course, so they have big blocks up time for their English and their math, and their science and their history rotate.
And, and the middle schools kind of still stayed with that schedule a little bit this year? We, they weren't switched to a six-period day, so really, it's not a change for the middle schools.
Anything else for Dr. Ballinger or Ms. Shepherd? All right, thank you all very much. Testing schedules at elementary and middle schools, Dr. Ballinger.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, as, as with everything else in a pandemic, it's, you know, you always, one thing leads to another, and one problem leads to another problem, and, you know, you think you have a great solution for starting school, and, but at the time when you're developing schedules and you're putting people in, you're following the guidance from the C D C and the Department of Ed and the Department of Health, you, you don't quite think of testing and how that's going to affect and what this, so basically what it's boiled down to is that because of limitations on space and limitations on staff, we are seeing at the elementary and the middle school issues with scheduling during testing. Now, high school's going to be fine. There's limited number of classes at the high school, um, that, that S O L, and, and they, they can, they can manage, but what we want to consider, so I want to, I want you to look at this schedule, this is an elementary, so this is a representation of what we're looking at, at the elementary level. So if you look at this option one, this would be keeping every student in school, and you can see that we may have to start on May twenty-first, but really, if you look at the bottom, makeups June fifteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. So we would be testing really about five weeks, and you're talking sometimes two days a week, three days a week, and it's with, with all of that that's going on at an elementary school, trying to extend, extend your testing window for five weeks would, it, it's going to be difficult, it's going to be a mess. So option two, um, what we talked about was, okay, what if we make, and, and the reason why we want to have this conversation today is because I know the charge of the board is that we want kids in school. We don't want to see virtual as much as, we want in-person as much, but to help out with scheduling, you can see on that next schedule that if we did K two virtual on the first and the third, and then K three virtual on the fourth, we could have testing done in one week versus the other schedule that was on the front. And then there's an option for, if we just picked the, say, the Fridays of, of, of a month, going the twenty-eighth, the fourth, and the eleventh, and made virtual, and now that's taking K two virtual and then K three virtual on, on the last day of, of testing when it's science and, and social studies. So we can either test over five weeks with a, a schedule that's a mess of trying to make sure you have coverage, or we can try to look at, yes, virtual is not our choice, but it would, it gives us the room and it gives us the staff available to, to make sure we get the testing done quick, and it's done and it's over. So really, you can gain five more quality instructional days by doing a virtual setting instead of testing over that long period of basically five weeks or four weeks there. Um, and so I just wanted to, to kind of have that discussion, and the same, the same thing we're seeing at the, at the middle school. Now, middle school, they have, they have it down to, I think Skyline Middle School has it down to five days. Warren County, right now, their schedule shows seven, but we're trying to get that down to six, but it's the same thing, staffing, spacing. So our elementary and our middle schools are having a hard time, uh, making sure, because you have to understand that when we go into testing, we have the test administrator, we have a test proctor, we have hall monitors, there's so many people that's involved in making sure that, that testing is secure and that we're doing the things that we're supposed to do, so, you know, just for, for, and then also you have all the, the individual sessions, the one-on-ones, those, those students with I A Ps, you know, it takes, it takes a lot of people to get this testing done. And so I know that your charge is that we want to have students in school, but also we, we have a, you know, we're facing another problem with how, how to handle testing at the elementary and the, and the, uh, the middle schools. So I'll stop there and see if you have.
I'm confused, uh, but that's something new. I think I processed differently. Um, so our virtual students, they're going to be coming into school to be tested.
Okay, so on this schedule, if you look at the orange, so on, on this one, every orange, they, Wednesday is scheduled for virtual students to come in.
Okay, so there's.
So on all three examples of the elementary, those are virtual students coming in.
And how are they getting to school, or are they going to be running bus?
The parents, the, uh, the schools, I guess, are figuring out the transportation. We have not had any requests for that, but it should be that the parents will bring them, drop them off for testing on that day, and then pick them up when their testing is, is complete. Uh, we have not had any requests for bus transportation yet, but maybe, Ms. Rudeasil, that may be something we want to talk to principals tomorrow and see if, if that is something we need to get in touch with Mr. Mitchell about.
And there is also the option for our virtual students to test remotely, so not all of their students will necessarily come in in person to test.
So how do we monitor in that situation?
So, so those students that are testing remotely, it's not going to count towards accreditation. It's just a monitoring tool to see if they've gained over the year. So those parents that are choosing to do the remote testing, it's not going towards accreditation. Only those students that come in will be counted towards the school's accreditation. And we would like for all, we would like for all students to come in and, and test in person. Um, and we encourage all students to come in and test in person. Yep. That way it gives us a tool to understand where we're at for next year, moving into, you know, do we have learning gaps? What do we need to address? You know, we, we have, there's a lot of things that go into this, so, uh, but yes, on those two, three schedules, the orange is virtual students, the yellow would be in-person students.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Any other questions for Dr. Ballinger? Personally, I like the one that's on Fridays, just simply because it gives the student some break of, I'm testing, I'm testing, I'm testing, I'm testing. Um, and since K, K through two has to be virtual, at least it's only one day a week, instead of, we use option two to be three days off in a row if they'd be off, but they wouldn't be in front of a teacher. So I kind of opt for, for option three. I think it would give the child, student, uh, a mind break, so to speak.
Yeah. If, if we choose that option, does, is there a reason why Friday is chosen as the testing day?
Well, one of the things that we looked at, uh, and I'll be honest with you, schools, when they submitted their schedules, some of them were picking Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday, but we sat down and, and discussed with, in, in the office and looked at, we don't want to have it to where a student is, so if you take Memorial Day, you know, if you have that, that week of May thirty-first to, through June fourth, we wanted to leave a Friday or use that full week because we didn't want that student to come in on Monday, they're virtual on Wednesday, then they're virtual on Thursday for testing, and then come back in person on Friday, because that would just be a, we wanted a little more consistency, uh, with, and that's why we said, let's either look at it for one week or look at Fridays to make it happen for us. Because it could be, and, and even on, you know, if we did Mondays, you would have, you know, you have that one Memorial Day, so then you'd have to bounce that to a Tuesday because that would be your first day back. We just tried to keep it consistent as possible, that's, that, and, and we didn't want to have the kids come in one day, be off a day, come in a day, then be off two more days, uh, just for consistency reasons.
Anything else? Comments, concerns?
Is option two preferred over option three, or is it?
Uh, we're, we're kind of, as far as the one that, one, it's, it's kind of a hard decision because we want our kids in school, and we know there's a downside to anything that you pick, and that's kind of been the, the theme for this year, you know, what's the downside, and what, which one is the, the best of the two worst options, you know, you're just going to pick one of the lesser of two evils. Um, you know, we are really fine with either of those, that's why we kind of presented those that, for discussion tonight, to, and just really to let the board know that we are struggling with this so that we could have some communication, uh, so that you are upfront and you know that we're looking at needing to move students virtually for testing to occur, and then to see if there's other questions or ideas that you may have moving forward with that. Uh, but really, Dr. Pence, to answer your question, I am fine with either option, uh, two or three.
Do parents are aware that something is happening or not quite yet?
Well, not yet. This is the, this would, if they're listening to the meeting tonight, this is, you know, the first of, uh, so we need, whichever option we're going to go with, we're going to try to get that out as early, and we're, again, we have a principals' meeting tomorrow with elementary, and well, this will be one of our topics. Uh, so, you know, we, we definitely want to get that out as, as quickly as possible. Now, I, I can tell you that.
I think that worked.
I can tell you that, that at the middle school, there's already been some communication, um, at, at, at a middle school. So, so they're, they're looking, and those parents have already been contacted, but elementary, no, because the first charge was, we don't want our elementary students to, to move to virtual, and how can you make it happen? Well, when they come back, this is the only way we can make it happen, and it's a, a month-long process.
But option three at least, well, I guess, I guess option two and option three is three days of testing, so. I don't, I'm with you, what's the worst of the evils? I mean, see what the, uh, teachers and principals have to say tomorrow, I guess.
Yeah, and, and as long as the board is okay, we're, we'll move, we'll move forward with those, you know, moving to testing and, and only having those students that are testing on those days come in, uh, because I know that you want students in, in school, we want students in school, and it's unfortunate that we're having to, to look at virtual options just for testing purposes.
Right. All right, anything else to talk about? You all good? All right, anything else for the board, Major and John? Thank you very much.
Good.